Well, we're back, ladies and gentlemen. We'll move over under new business item number 16, Adopt a Policy I-16 to prohibit installation of closures, gates, or other physical barriers on public streets. And this item is presented by Mayor Pro Tem Frank Ferry. Frank?
I was, in the last two days, reminded of how necessary this is when I received numerous emails and phone calls from members from Happy Valley, Friendly, or Happy Valley, Valley-Cowgrove, barricade gate. That might have been one of the ugliest processes we went through in the city's history when it came to neighborhoods absolutely divided and fighting. And that showed in me and reminded me exactly why we're doing this because two meetings ago, we had the Benz community fill this room absolutely demanding that the diverters were taken down because of the adversity that it created within the neighborhood. The number-one issue in our community for the last 15 years has been traffic and our road transportation. There's been nothing else closer to that issue. Whenever we do any polling, local media sources do polling, clearly traffic, transportation, quality-of-life issue comes up. And I think of that cartoon of, you know, the cat that gets shot numerous times and they try to plug the hole with the water and all the water comes pouring out somewhere else. That's what barricades and gates do, is they create pressure somewhere else. We do not have enough public roads. We know that we're trying to build a Cross Valley Connector to alleviate, knowing that the second that a bridge is built, we have to look for the next opportunities to build new roads. And I guess the reason I brought this forward is, when we look at Benz Road, when we look at Linda Vista, Canvas, when we look to Valley, Valley-Cowgrove, when we look to other roads that are out there, and I'll make it clear, this proposal's for future decisions of the council. This is not to rehash Valley-Cowgrove. I don't want to live through that again. I did it once, miserable experience, so I want to make it clear, this is for future council decisions. I brought this forward because the city staff, when I look back at Andrew, they need to know what they have in their toolbox. Clearly, last time, the council voted, and I respect the council's decision, on speed cushions, that we're going to look to see if they work, what opportunities do we have within our neighbors to do traffic calming? So we're going to look at that possibility. But when it comes to actually closing a road barricaded or gated, we've never done that well where it has not hurt the community. And I just have been consistent from day one that I just do not believe any public road should ever be closed down, and we should only look for new opportunities to improve our transportation system. So I looked to the council once again, resetting this policy. We did it after the Valley-Cowgrove, but I thought it's 10 years later now that we need to look at revisiting this issue and saying that it's not our position to close barricade roads. But it also gives Xander Yee and Robert Newman, our Director of Transportation Services, a clear position from this council that that is not an option within the toolkit, that we'll look at a stop sign, we'll look at, you know, road, you know, can't turn left between such hours, we'll look at speed cushions if they end up being what we're looking at. But closing this road is not an option, therefore, don't talk about that. That's not where we're going. Because every time we do it, we fill the room because that traffic goes somewhere, just like the cat that sticks his finger in the water trying to let the one hole plug up. So that's what I thought of the cartoon, though. Every cartoon has that. That's what I was thinking of. So that's why I brought this forward tonight. So.
Thank you, Frank. And are there any points of discussion with Frank before we listen to our public speakers?
I think Frank made it really clear that this doesn't affect anything that's out there in existence, and I think that's going to be the concern of a lot of people, is does it impact where I am and what I have? And then there's the question of, say, and I think you spelled it out pretty well, the, you know, things that traffic calm, speed humps, maybe does that include, like, bulb valves? Things that staff does that slow people down because speeding seems to be the number-one thing that drives people in their neighborhood to distraction, of fear and concern. But if you wanted to, a new development, say somebody wanted to build a Bridgeport kind of internal traffic, you know, it's a very interesting kind of traffic calming they did, this doesn't affect that. Because, is that correct, I'm asking? I thought that was correct, but I just want to make sure that we're very clear that everybody understands what this does and doesn't affect. But thank you, Frank. Good job.
Well, the thing is, it should state that, absolutely, 100%.
We'll add that to the language, I'm sorry. But mind you, we have some speakers here, folks. Okay? Speakers, our first speaker is Linda Purcell, be followed by Tim Ben Boyston, followed by Tony Natoli, followed by Alan Firdman. Linda? You wound up first twice tonight, didn't you?
Yeah, I should have bought a lottery ticket.
There you go.
I'm concerned about any blanket policy for future that prohibits gates or other physical barriers forever for all of Santa Clarita. I think each neighborhood needs to be considered on a case-by-case basis. I agree that traffic, I know the polls you're talking about, that traffic is the number-one issue, but I think if you talk to that person who's being polled and said, "But do you want it diverted through your neighborhood?", they would say no. They would say neighborhoods first, then traffic. So I'm concerned about any blanket policy that says no barriers ever again, or no closures. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next speaker, Mr. Boyston.
Mayor Keller, City Council members, City Manager, Mr. Ken Pulsecamp, I am former City Council member, Tim Ben Boyston, and speaking as a private citizen of Santa Clarita and a member of the Santa Clarita Neighborhood Coalition. As a matter of this policy, but also in reference to the last item that was before the council, it is kind of disturbing when we're speaking about development issues, when, Mr. Ferry, when one of your primary issues is, is the developer going to make money on this? And with all due respect, Mr. Keller, I know we've both been in real estate, and we know that that's not the primary job of the city council, to decide whether the developer, whether you're making decisions on density or making decisions on how something's laid out, as to whether the developer is going to make money. And it's rather disturbing for us to sit here and have to listen to that as being the primary objective of a development. And so I just wanted to make that point. This policy that's proposed before you has nothing to do with good government and everything to do with politics. Mr. Ferry would like to give the council an excuse to tell the people that are coming to the council looking for a solution, "I'm sorry, that's not our policy, so go away." It's short-sighted to make a policy that says we are going to remove tools from our government toolbox, which may help find a solution to some situations in the future. Now, I know, Mr. Ferry, that you have stated that Santa Clarita needs to get used to the idea of maximum number of lanes need to be striped to accommodate all the traffic and as many roads as possible, that you have planned for Santa Clarita through the vertical density that you want in one valley, one vision. But the people I talked to in Santa Clarita don't want the vertical density, and they don't want their neighborhoods ruined by cut-through traffic from this new valley of villages. The council needs the flexibility to be able to use the solution of gates as a city chose to do in the past at Cowgrove. And if the city chooses to say no to a gate, then do so. Stand up individually as council members and say yes to this or no to that, but don't hide behind a policy for political reasons because you don't want to face the public. This policy will be bad governance. Please reject the staff recommendations and face the problems that are created by the development in our city, and don't pretend that they don't exist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Natoli, followed by Mr. Firdman.
Benz Road is served now as a warning to others. This is what can happen to you. Benz Road is now held up as the epitome of cut-through traffic and what can happen to a neighborhood. There's not one neighborhood that doesn't have a gate that's complaining about having that gate. There's not one of those neighborhoods that have been closed off that ever went back and said, "No, you shouldn't have done that." Those neighborhoods, such as Placerita Canyon and Cowgrove and Rainbow Glen, all are nice neighborhoods to live in now. The tools that we now have publicly on the internet, the 15 tools that have not been used yet, are brought about by this example of Benz Road and Linda Vista. And now you're saying, "No, we're not going to use them." You proved that. Five years I've been coming to you people, begging and pleading and working with you. And in one week, the lynch mob came in here and threatened you, and you melted to them. You want to have a policy, have a policy that gives traffic engineering the ability to use these tools to bring back order and a reasonable life to the people that are suffering with the cut-through traffic in their neighborhoods. Right now, there's a street called Cedar Valley Parkway with a right-turn restriction that is closed off, waiting to open for the low's traffic, that is essentially a half, excuse me, a half-street blockage that probably will be included in this. I can just see it in the near vicinity. That right-turn restriction is something that we've needed on Benz for five years. Yet it's up there now on a street waiting to open that will prevent traffic from coming, cutting through that neighborhood east to west. These are the things, these are the tools that are needed to restore those communities, keep the traffic on the main corridors, fix the main corridors, keep them out of the neighborhoods. Please reject this policy. If you need to adopt a new one and give the traffic engineers the freedom to implement these tools and restore peace and serenity to our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Natoli. Our next speaker will be Alan Firdman, followed by Richard Smith, followed by Annette Lucas.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alan Firdman. I am the Chair of the Canyon Country Advisory Committee. The traffic department's job is to analyze things as engineers. They need every tool in their toolbox to do that analysis. Your job is to make the decision of whether or not to accept their analysis. Taking things away from them just adds frustration to the local residents that have a problem and the engineers that are trying to solve the problem. This particular policy is directly related, is directly aimed at Benz Road and Canvas-Linda Vista. There's no doubt about that. This is directly related to trying to silence residents. But I got to tell you what, the policy which is taking away many of the options from the traffic department is extremely transparent. The circular logic here doesn't make any sense. Today, if I want to put in a gate, I have to come to you, and you have to approve it. So what do you do? You're going to write a policy that says, "No gates." But the exception is to come to you to get an approval for the exception. So what does this policy do? Nothing. The people are still going to come here, they're still going to ask for it, because even though you got a policy that says you can't do it, you put right in the policy that you can accept it. So I think it's a lot smarter to give the engineers all of those intrinsic tools that they need to go do a good analysis, and then you can make a good decision. Let's help out our residents, let's try to make things as reasonable and as realistic as possible, and reduce the frustration level that just keeps building when we write down rules that make no sense.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker would be Mr. Richard Smith.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. I'm here on my own behalf, my family, those of Sunset Heights, the hundreds and hundreds that live there, and fear for many, many reasons. I'm also part of the Santa Clarita Neighborhood Coalition. All applications should be heard and evaluated on their own merit. Unilaterally blanketing them from allowing us to come with that is basically cutting us off from any options that might protect us. The council should never shut out a community's opportunity to undertake to protect their neighborhoods from increasing crime, and this also includes speeders. We all agree that cut-throughs are wrong and dangerous, and if a community can take control of their streets and do what is necessary to stop speeders, and they should be stopped, then we feel that it is the community to go in these directions and take the experience necessary and control to protect their families. The streets, I'm sorry, and we're all willing to undertake our streets. We have filed a vacation of streets, which is part of the procedure to privatize our neighborhood. We are willing to pay a lot of money to build the necessary gates, not as a fortification, but at least as a deterrent to stop what is happening. Crime is increasing in our neighborhood daily, regardless of what you may have been told. We hear it through our internet, we see it by our neighbors. People are climbing in our backyards, people are knocking on our doors. We need the ability to stop that. We need the ability to control a 25 mile-an-hour zone. And if we're willing to undertake every month the added expense, it must be understood that this is really, really important to hundreds and hundreds of people. And these people are voters, and these people need your help because that's why we put you here. I also need you to realize that, you know, do you really want to bring in 50 or 100 people knocking on the door? I know that Mr. Ferry hates it when we all come in here and stay until 2:00 in the morning. I'm sure you all do. But if that's what we have to do, to get those that we've put into office, to hear our cries, to understand how important this is, that we're able to do it, we're tucked away in an area, we're not out in the middle of blocking Mr. Ferry's traffic lanes, we can control it and make it safe for their side and our side, get agreements from both sides, and we should be able to come in and propose it to you. Remember, we didn't set these streets up this way, your traffic department did, and now we're suffering with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Annette Lucas, and be followed by Valerie Thomas, followed by Nadine Teeter.
Good evening again, Mayor Keller, members of the council, and manager of our city. I'm here tonight in opposition of the newly proposed policy to prohibit any closure, gates, or other physical barriers on public streets at this time. In the past, the council has chosen to protect the quality of life and safety in the neighborhoods like Happy Valley. I can attest that there is a Happy Valley resident in here tonight, that we are all in agreement that the Valley Gate was the best decision, but it took court litigation to make it legal. It wasn't the fact that the gate needed to be put up, it was the fact that there were special-interest people bypassing a public road. Now you have at least two neighborhood residential streets, particularly Benz Road and Linda Vista Canvas, that are under siege, and the residents are only asking for the same consideration. You may say, "We cannot continue to close or barrier every street that has traffic." So if you're opposed to closing roads, then don't open them. That will cause the problems that the existing residents in the neighborhoods have. The city did approve Sunset Heights in 1989, and if the council, and if the county is the other side of the problem, then why annex their developments and their problems into the city that affect our current residents? You, the council, have the obligation to the existing residents of Santa Clarita to require that the developers build the roads to support their projects, and if they're not willing to do it, don't approve their projects. It's that simple. This policy should not be implemented with the two current neighborhoods, especially after all the years of hard work they have already done. Instead, this should be a wake-up call to never open residential streets to accommodate new development. You must require the developer to provide the ingress and egress to their development or not approve it. Like another Santa Clarita resident said, "It's not rocket science." Now it's time to implement a policy on existing problems. Wait until the problems have been corrected and then implement what you feel is right in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. City Attorney, a quick question for you, if I may, sir. Valerie Thomas was in here earlier. She was feeling a little poorly and asked if she could have her statements read. I don't recall what prohibitions might be. I thought maybe the city clerk could read it on her behalf, but I want to check with you. With the council's permission, that's appropriate. Okay, council, will it be acceptable? Sharon, would you mind reading on behalf of Valerie Thomas, please? Don't go over three minutes.
Okay. Shall I time myself?
I'll time you.
Okay.
He's timing herself.
We rely on our city council to protect our neighborhoods. I live in Placerita Canyon. It is gated, but the road is private, so this proposal will not apply to my neighborhood. A dozen years ago, Placerita Canyon Road had 11,000 to 14,000 cars per day racing down the narrow road. While we were fortunate to be able to close off our private road at one end and stop the pass-through traffic, I remember those days and ask council to protect other neighborhoods. We buy homes in neighborhoods that complement our lifestyle. Most of us recognize that growth is coming, lots of growth, and we know we can't shut off our valley from that growth. But it is important to most of the citizens of Santa Clarita that we retain as much of our lifestyle as possible. Neighborhoods throughout the valley are looking to the city council and city staff to ensure the quiet enjoyment of their homes. We should be able to walk to the curb to pick up our mail without fearing for our safety from the rush of traffic. Our children should be able to ride a bicycle or skateboard in front of his home without fearing for their safety. A dog bolting out the front door should have a fighting chance to make it safely back. This is a quality-of-life issue, not a NIMBY problem. City staff works hard to ensure adequate circulation when new developments go in within our boundaries, but the county isn't as diligent. OVOV is planned to bring the county's requirements for developments more in line with the city's. But until these plans are finalized, please don't enable the county's lax planning at the expense of local established neighborhoods. Please don't take any of the tools away staff needs to keep our neighborhood safe. A line from the Hippocratic Oath applies, first of all, do no harm. We are relying on our city council to protect us. I have a minute and six seconds left.
Thank you, Valerie.
You did a very nice job.
Very pleasant.
Next speaker is Nadine Teeter, to be followed by Shannon Thompson. Nadine?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name's Nadine Teeter, been a resident of Santa Clarita for almost 20 years. I strongly oppose the adoption of Policy I-16. By adopting a policy such as this, you are removing tools from a toolbox, tools that staff may need in order to solve a problem. I believe that with the city growing as rapidly as we are, we need every tool possible to solve problems that may arise. There are several areas throughout the city that gates or barriers have been used, for example, Valley-Cowgrove, Viadona Crista, Maple, even San Fernando Road. By using this type of physical solution, it solved the problem. It protected neighborhoods, goals were accomplished. Adopting a policy such as this is not a proactive approach in problem-solving, it's another way to say we can't. How can you adopt a policy like this for the entire Santa Clarita Valley? Every neighborhood is different, and trying to solve them the same way just doesn't work. Why do you want to tie city staff's hands? Allow them to use every tool possible to solve whatever problem we have now or in the future. I understand that all prior gates and barriers that we have installed fall under the grandfather clause. How's that justified? Why do some neighborhoods deserve to be protected but others don't? Right now, there are two neighborhoods in front of you with unresolved traffic problems, Benz Road and Canvas Street. For years, both neighborhoods have been begging for your help, and this policy, and if this policy is adopted, you are slamming the door in our faces. Please leave this option open for us, leave every option open for us, even if it's used as a last resort. Road closures and barriers should be kept in the toolbox and should be used and considered on a case-to-case basis. I'm sure Public Works staff would agree with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nadine. Shannon Thompson?
It's well past my bedtime, so I'm going to make this brief. I live on Canvas Street, and I'm here to voice my opposition of the staff's recommendation to prohibit gates and other barriers on public roads. This policy is about convenience, nothing but convenience. The mother not having to drive that one extra mile to get her kids to school, the council members who have to try and find resolution for the families affected by all the extra traffic, crime, which comes out of creating through streets by using residential streets. On the policy procedure form that you guys have, there's six different items that are listed as to why these prohibiting barriers would be a good plan. The first one is limited access to public streets. Well, that's kind of a good thing, but better planning in the beginning is really the best way to do it. When developers want to use an existing residential street as a cut-through, like Canvas, for instance, Canvas is very narrow, we have too much traffic, and it's not so much the speed. I mean, speed does come with it because you have that many more cars coming down your street, but it's the volume of cars that are coming down. Increased travel distance due to new paths, that's a convenience thing. If that road was never opened up in the first place from what the developer had planned, those moms and those folks using that road wouldn't find it so hard to go back to the normal route that they were using before, they started using that convenience street. So it's all convenience. Increased travel distance, more fuel consumption, going green. The residents who, let's say you're on Benz Road, who support that sort of information, how many of them drive SUVs? How many of them mow their lawns with gas mowers? How many of those SUVs and big trucks are towing boats that use gasoline? It's not about the gasoline consumption, that's a nice idea, but it's about convenience. Increased travel distance for emergency responders, if we put in an emergency gate, there'll be a Knox box, emergency vehicles will be able to get through, and it won't be a problem. Creates divisiveness and animosity amongst neighbors. There is already animosity. Not so much so that we hate each other, but there is definitely a feeling of tension. But the folks who are angry about losing their convenience will let go of that eventually because it's habit, it's ritual to go that same route every day. But the folks like me, living on Canvas, I'm not likely to give up that animosity because of the constant traffic that I'm living with 24/7. I don't get over a convenience, I have to live with it for the next 10, 15, however many years that I plan to live there. And I love Santa Clarita, and I love my house, I love my neighbors, I don't want to move because of traffic. So in closing, I primarily speaking about Canvas and my neighborhood, but I feel that all neighborhoods who have fallen victim to having their quiet streets turned into cut-throughs should have the means to get these issues corrected on a case-to-case basis.
Rep. please.
This policy would remove those means, and it sure would make it convenient for you.
Thank you. Council, we also have six comment cards, and they are in opposition to the recommendation, and also echo the comments that have been made by the speakers.
Can I ask Mr. Newman to come real quick? Mr. Newman, what's the traffic count on McBean Parkway?
Yes, the wrong guy. Should have asked Andrew.
Andrew, it doesn't matter, whoever has the answer.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. McBean is about 45,000 a day.
Okay, 45,000. What's the traffic count in Bouquet Canyon?
Depends what section, anywhere from...
Bouquet, from New Hall Ranch to Plum Canyon.
That portion in front of Best Spa is pretty high, I think approximately 55 to 60.
Of 60. What's the traffic count of White's Canyon, north of Solidad?
White's Canyon has increased about, approximately more than 10,000 within the last three or four years because of all the development on Plum. I think it runs close to, I'm kind of confirming with the eye, about close to 40, I believe.
What's the traffic count of Lyons?
Lyons, I think approximately 30,000 to 35,000 a day.
And the traffic count of a Solidad?
Solidad, different, depend on different section, anywhere from 50, you know, some places more than 50, maybe down to 40.
Is it fair to say that when 45,000 people go up McBean, 60,000 at Bouquet, 10,000 Plum, 35,000 Lyons, is it fair to say that those are city residents for the most part, valley residents that live here?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yes.
So when they get off, everyone's saying, "Put the traffic on the main thoroughfares." With the railroad and the river and the mountains, are we pretty much using all our main thoroughfares to its maximum capacity now?
Yes, because, I mean, it's indication, because a lot of our intersections are pretty much saturated during the peak hours, and that is, I mean, you can see Boquet Junction as pretty congested.
But our main thoroughfares is roughly 200,000 daily traffic trips. Is it safe to say that when a car goes from Market to 8th Street, or Ben's Road, or John Russell, is it fair to say that those are neighborhoods cutting through to get to their home from these main boulevards?
Typically, except, I mean, when we look at Ben's, it's a little bit unique issue, but most of streets are, it's neighborhood traffic.
And if the council with Ben's, once they put up the no-left-turn restrictions, most cut throughs went away, correct?
It reduced the total volume about 1,500 a day. It was, I believe it was 33, same location was 33 a day down to 1,800. So it was 1,500 reduction in one day in one location. We believe some of the cut through traffic left, but at the same time, some of the cut through traffic still remain.
1,800 that were left, though, was determined by your staff eventually, and we saw in the room a couple of weeks ago, that those were neighborhoods' residents that were using Ben's, correct?
That was indication, a lot of neighborhoods are using, and that they were impacted by barriers we haven't put in there.
As the person who handles these issues, you heard Happy Valley people today saying, "We want to come back to you and talk about maybe closing Market or 8th to preserve their neighborhoods." Is it good public policy to close a public road?
I want to put this in kind of a macro perspective. Let's look at whole city, you know, as a traffic volume, let's say reduce it to 5%. That's quite significant. If you reduce 5% during peak hour, that is tremendous impact throughout the city. You're not only talking about the fuel consumption, the quality of life, I'm talking about quality of life, that the demand for infrastructure, a pollution reduction, and you can think of all different kinds of things. That was kind of a heart of what we've been trying to do and normalize plan. Today, one of the byproducts, the project that got approved today, is a safety rock school that we got about more than $2 million, and city is trying to do, reduce number of trips. Not only the number of trips, you want to reduce distance. So the less distance you travel, less trips you create is better for the whole city. And for the transportation perspective, you want to do that as much as you can.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Andrew?
If I wanted to go from Frankfurt to Paris, is it faster? I'm just kidding. But I just, that was very impressive, so.
Counsel?
You know, I just want to say, the one thing that sticks out, and it's come up in all of these discussions, the whole concept of the public road. I live on my street, so is, does that, my road is a public road, but does it only belong to the people on my street? And I think that's where we keep getting to, this whole public road thing. If I want to drive down 8th, I should be able to drive down 8th. I don't have any reason to do that right now, but I mean, to me, it's the public road, it belongs to the public. So I don't, you know, that was an experiment gone bad with the Ben situation, and I think that it showed us, I'm sorry, Mr. Natoli, to use that as an example, but the roads belong to the public. And I, you know, how that plays into this, I just think it's an important thing to remember.
Any else?
Sure. You know, I truly sincerely believe that existing neighborhoods, older established neighborhoods, need to be protected from new development. And true, the roads are public, but you've taken an older established neighborhood, and this new development has come, and their streets have become busy, and it has become a real problem for older established neighborhoods. I don't think we should be closing the door on possible solutions, and I'm very concerned with this, with this proposal, because it's very vague in its language. You're talking about, or other physical barriers. Do physical barriers mean bulbouts? Do physical barriers mean street narrowing? Do physical barriers mean speed humps? You know, so are those prohibited then by this ordinance? It's just too vague for me to be able to support it. And I...
Those are traffic calming measures, those don't close a road. So a hump, a bulge, all those things you mentioned, not one of them keeps public from going through a public road.
But this says to prohibit installation of closures, gates, or other physical barriers on public streets.
A diverter is a public, is a barrier.
Well, but so is, so, I mean, when you go drive through a Bridgeport development, you've got all kinds of barriers. You have to keep going.
Oh, those are traffic circles.
You have to keep going around.
Those are traffic circles, and we still, as a public, can drive on that road around the circle.
Then this needs to state categorically exactly what you're talking about with physical barriers, and state that street narrowing, bulbouts, and things like that are not physical barriers.